Well, he's not responding. But we have. Appears we have a quorum, so I think we can start. Okay. So this is the Hideout Utah Town Council regular meeting and public hearing for November 12th, 2020. Call the meeting to order. And refresh everyone. On the. No anchor site. Bob is apparently about to join, so we'll look for him to join by the meantime.
Mayor, I just wanted to point out the recording is paused. That's what it says.
Oh, good point. Thank you.
Now it's.
Thank you very much, Chris. I think we're recording now. No, we're recording now. Okay, so again. This is the Hideout Town Council of November 12th, 2020. I am. Reviewing the no anchor site determination. So. As of November 10th, termination regarding conducting town of hideout public meetings without an anchor location. The mayor of town of the town of Hideout hereby determines that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to health and safety. Of those who may be present at the anchor location pursuant to Utah Code 52 dash four dash two oh seven sub four. And had out town ordinance 2020 oh three. The facts upon which the determination based include the percent number of positive COVID-19 in Utah. Evan has been over 20% of those tested since November 2nd, 2020. The seven day average cases has been over 2,400 since November 2nd, 2020. And COVID-19 patients in Utah hospitals have been significant during the same time period. So the meeting will not have a physical anchor location. All participants will connect remotely. Public meetings are available via YouTube live stream. On the Hideout Utah YouTube channel at the link, the link shown below. Here or and or via for the public hearing portion of the meeting. Via the Zoom session.
Mayor, have we confirmed that the live stream is up and running?
Hey Jerry, thanks for asking. Yes, it is up. I've confirmed it.
Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, the comments can obviously be mailed to Hideout Utah, Hideout Utah.gov or pre-registering to tend via Zoom by emailing Hideout Utah, Hideout Utah.gov. Email comments prior to the scheduled meeting will be read during the public comment portion of the reading, meeting and entered into public record. Alicia, have we received any specifically for this meeting?
I haven't seen anything. I'll just do a double check really quick and let you know.
This determination will expire on December 10th, 2020. Or be renewed. Okay. So we're not having an anchor location. I will take the roll call. Jerry Doinell.
Here.
Ralph Serini.
Here.
Carol Hazelton.
Here.
Chris Byer.
Here.
Bob Nadelber.
Here.
Okay. So we have. Full council present tonight. We also have on the phone town. Administrator Jen McCosh and our town attorney. Polly McLean. So we, we have everything we need there.
And our town planner.
Oh, and town planner is also on as well. You're right. Thank you, Thomas Heddington. So. So first thing we've got is approval of minutes. There are two sets of minutes. We have something going back all the way to August, August 13th, and then the meeting minutes of October 8th minutes. Alicia is working diligently to get them all caught up, but as you all may remember, there were significant number of meetings. Over the last. Months and created a backlog that she's slowly working her way through, so. Ah, I'm happy to review the minutes here. This is a. A regular meeting of August 13th, so this go back quite a bit. In fact. Kurt was still in council and Dan was still primary town attorney. Any questions on the minutes from council concerns?
I've reviewed. I have no additions or corrections.
I reviewed as well. No issues. Let's see who else is. Chris, Carol, Bob. Any comments on the minutes of? August 13th.
I have nothing on the 13th.
Okay. Okay, then I would need a motion to approve the minutes of August 13th.
So moved.
Thank you, Jerry.
I'll second. I'll second.
Thank you, Carol. Bob?
Yeah, all in favor. I'm sorry, what do I say? Yeah. I vote to.
Are you supportive of approving the minutes of August 13th?
Yes.
Thank you. Carol?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Ralph, you weren't on the council, but. At the time.
Yeah, I'll abstain on this one.
Thank you. All right, the next one, where are the October 8th minutes?
I do have a comment on this one on page three, line 17.
Okay.
The last sentence of that paragraph, again, the context here is the Lakeview Estates. And the last paragraph is talking about working with shoreline developer and gateway engineering to ensure the developments would take place. I'm not sure what this sentence is saying. Which, which developments?
Yeah.
Why shoreline being referenced here? I'm not sure what the context is of this.
Probably the road that connects, but I don't see it specified.
Here, Jerry, I'll look at it real quickly. Give me one second.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would think that it would not be the shoreline developer. It would be the Lakeview developer.
Yeah, I think in this, in this particular instance, it is the developer. It is Lakeview developer in this particular instance. The sentence before references our work with the state land and. Dealing with a small town or a small section to the town, but yeah, this should, this should say Lakeview developer.
And I don't know who gateway engineering is.
Gateway engineering is the engineer for Lakeview.
Oh, okay.
Not the towns engineer, the projects engineer.
Okay.
That's why I think shoreline is probably the wrong. Name in there. It's a good pickup, Jerry.
Yep, that is like view.
Alicia, can you go back and check the tape?
Yes.
And then.
I will, and I'll correct it if it's.
And modify that. I'm pretty sure that's probably. A slip.
Yeah, could probably just drop shoreline and just say work with the developer and gateway engineering too.
Okay, that works.
That works.
That's my only comment on these minutes.
Good pickup, Jerry. I read that and it just didn't click.
Had a couple of comments. Shoot, I didn't. I didn't actually put down the line. I'm sorry. There was, there was some discussion about the sewer and the lift stations. And it said it did reference shoreline and, but it didn't reference. Which shoreline lift station it was. Now I can't remember where it was. But I know it was. It was about the sewers.
Well, there was some comment about that in the Lakeview section because there, there was some changes to the sewer system with regard to that.
I think it's at the very last paragraph of page three.
From page one, three?
Yep, you're almost there.
Yeah.
Yeah, he explained it.
So Carol, is this the section you're thinking?
Can you enlarge that a little bit?
Sure I can. It's bigger on my screen than it is on yours.
I think line 42 is where you're talking about. It doesn't say which phase of shoreline.
Right, yeah.
Okay. If I remember correctly, I think this is supposed to reference the lift station that is shoreline because I think that work will be done by the Lakeview developer Nate and Glenn. Shoreline developer. So I think this one is correct. The only thing I would say here is that last line should say it was confirmed by Mr. Taylor. Ryan Taylor and the paragraph before it, line 34, that's items presented by Ryan Taylor.
Taylor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I do think.
So is this. Which shoreline is this? Because now we're dealing at the moment.
Carol, there's only, there's only one lift station for shoreline.
For all of shoreline.
For all of shoreline. One.
Okay. All right.
This is the, this is the shoreline lift station, which is sitting at shoreline, at the corner shoreline phase two, two down there, down the bottom.
Okay. And then I had a couple of other comments, but. They're not to the minutes. They're about what the minutes are about. So where do I bring those up?
If, if you don't think we captured the scope of the discussion properly, then this is where you do that. We'll go back and look at that, which.
Okay, you, you discussed it, so it's fine. I'm just wondering what further actions. Because there were a number of things that were referenced that were going to be dealt with. And I just wondered where we are in the progression of some of the things that we were going to be doing.
Oh, you mean a status update for something that was discussed in October?
Yeah, thanks, Jerry. Okay. So how do we do that?
That wouldn't be right now, Carol. We're just approving minutes, but.
Right, okay, so I'll bring that up later. Okay, all right.
Yeah, I agree. Sometimes reading these minutes, you know. Later than when it happened, you go, oh yeah, we talked about that.
Right.
And what happened?
Yeah, what happened exactly? Okay.
Yeah, okay. I do have a question in the minutes. If you could go to. Looks like it's on page 13. Of the packet. It's about recycling. Section eight, discussion regarding possible adoption of ordinance requiring use of recycle bins, that section.
Number eight, she said.
Great. Okay. And I really. Am a little ashamed to admit this, but I do not recall that we decided to require the use of bins and that that would start December 1st.
Well, we, we definitely decided that we were going to put a letter to the company telling them that they needed to. Have their. Users have bins. We did say that.
And I recall the December 1st as well, because one of the things we talked about was those white bags and white snowbanks.
Yeah. And we're not going to make December 1st because it was a little bit of back and forth on the language of the letter with our legal help, so it's only going out tomorrow.
Okay.
It may, it may move to December 15th, but.
Yeah, the intent on the first was that hopefully we beat the snowfall. Well, you know, that didn't exactly happen anyway, but.
And this is supposed to get quite a bit of snow this weekend as well, but it'll be what it is.
And I was just about to ask my wife if she heard from Recyclops. If we, if we had to, you know, get, get our new recycling can because I knew this was on the, on the docket. And I haven't heard anything. I, you know.
Reason, the reason is Ralph, that we didn't have the language for the communication with Recyclops finalized until this week, so. So the letter's going out tomorrow and. I'll give them. You know, roughly a month to get, to get the message out to their, to the users.
You know, that's going to limit the amount of recycling we can put out, right? The bins aren't that big. They're bins.
Their bins are. Smaller than the trash can from, from Wasatch, but the same height, so they're, they're pretty decent size.
Hey, Phil, it's Bob. If I can add to that, I spoke with Recyclops a couple of months ago. And you don't have to use their small yellow bin. You could go to perhaps Ace Hardware or Home Depot and buy a recycling trash bin that both those stores sell. I can tell you that our little yellow bin is, it's, it's not sufficient. It's too small.
Okay.
Right, so let's get some clarity with what the arrangement is with Recycle Ops. Make sure that everybody understands it between the town and Recycle Ops. So that they can properly communicate with their subscribers.
Well, the communication is that they can't put it in bags. They have to put it in bins, whether they use the Recyclops bin or they use another bin. That's up to Recyclops. To communicate with their users, from a town perspective, it's got to be off the ground and in a bin. So they will then communicate with, with the users of. Of their service to. Let the users know what their options are.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I didn't quite remember it that way, so appreciate it. Jerry and. Bob. And Ralph.
You said you had a couple of things, Chris?
Nope, I just had one. It's, it was Carol who had a couple of things, but.
I'll bring them later. Yeah.
Hey, Chris, if you'd like, I can put, I can make that sentence read. It was decided or discussed. The bin should be implemented prior to December 1st.
Thank you.
Will that work? Okay, I can do that.
And then Alicia, did you, you did pick up the comments that. On that we had. Brian's last name wrong.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Thomas. I appreciate that. Little embarrassed, sorry.
Okay.
It's a lot of names out there.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so what we would be looking for, if there are no more comments on these, is a motion to. Approve the minutes with the changes we, after, after, after making the changes we identified tonight.
So moved.
Was that you, Bob? Sorry.
Yes, yes.
Need a second.
I'll second it.
Ralph, thank you. Okay. These are the minutes of October 8th, right? Yeah. Okay, Carol?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bob? Yes.
Thank you. Minutes are approved. Appreciate that, folks. Okay. So the next item is public input. This is for. Items that are not on the agenda tonight. We are, yeah, and on the agenda tonight is, is a topic about the potential annexation. So we're not taking comments on that because we're, we're going to be talking about that later in the meeting.
And Mayor will also be talking about the, the pond. Tonight, is that on the?
We'll have, yeah, we'll have that on the Mustang issues, yeah.
Okay.
So. To make a comment. Those of you in the Zoom meeting who might want to make a comment on general. Public input, you would have to raise your hand and the way you do that is. Through the Zoom, if you go to the attendees, participants list in Zoom. Find your name and. You can hit the more button and raise it. It'll give you the option to raise your hand.
There's also a button right at the bottom of the. Of the participant list. For raise hand. You don't see it, Phil, because you're a co-host, but.
Yeah.
And there's a way to do that for folks that are dialed in as well, isn't there?
Yeah, I think it's, there's a star number, but.
I don't see any dial-ins in the, in the meeting.
Appears to be, well, I see names. I don't know if they're dialing or not. I see names.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a name if there's a.
All right, I'm going to. Go to Carolyn Davis first. Carolyn, you should have a message to. Go ahead and you're, you're able to speak now, Carol.
Thank you. I have my other half here with me, Dale Hman. We co-own our property together here in Shoreline. So we will both be speaking if that's okay. I'm going to let Dale take it away.
All right, thank you. Mayor Rubin, you may remember a phone conference that we had with you back in, I think it was February of this year. Regarding the lack of attention and willingness by the shoreline developer of phase one to address. The builder warranty. Repairs. It's now been, I don't know, what are we, eight months later? Nine months later and. We've still had lack of response and lack of performance by GCD to remedy these defects. Some of the defects for the homeowners are cosmetic in nature, but many of the defects are health and safety issues. In our personal situation, we did have mold that was remediated by the developer back in May. But they've not remediated sewage that continues to back up in our lower level bathtub nor sewer gas that comes up into the master bathroom. Every single day. Brian Miller was the onsite project manager. However, at the, the first of October, he. Left on indefinite sick leave. And since then, there's been little to no response other than, well, we'd like to come into your home again for the. Fourth or fifth time and, and have you walk through everything that needs to be fixed on your list and. And well, we'll, we'll, we'll see about getting to that. The unfortunate part is that that story has been going on in our particular case for a year and a half. And we wanted to bring it to the town's council's attention that while GCD is. Wanting to obviously continue to build out the additional phases, they've taken no responsibility of remedying homeowner warranty issues for phase one.
Well, I certainly think your sewer issue is a significant issue. I'll certainly personally reach out to. To, to the GCT people on that one, but I know that they have done remediation work up there, so I think it's unfair to say they've done none. I know they did roof work. I know they've done other things, so. They may still have outstanding items, but I think it's, you know, I think it's wrong to suggest that they haven't done anything.
Well, I guess I can only speak from personal experience and having from the items on our list, we have had three items addressed since February. Considering we purchased our home February, the year before that. I would think that they could accomplish more than three items in eight months.
So. Again, I can. Only reiterate that. While it's unfortunate that you're having these issues. These are homeowner warranty type issues, not municipal issues. I do recognize that it, it's been dragging on too long. And as I said, I will reach out to, to GCD tomorrow. And ask them to once again step it up. And make an appearance and come in there and, and help you remedy your issue.
Mayor, and, and maybe, maybe Polly needs to weigh in on this as well. I think the suggestion is that, you know, GCD is still building in the area. And they haven't, they haven't made good on their phase one. Is there any legal remedy that the municipality has to apply pressure? I think that's what the, what, what they're asking for, and I'm, I'm not sure we can, but it is a question.
Thanks, Jerry.
Unfortunately, this is a matter between the owners and the developers directly. We have no ability to step in, even though, even though there's still possibly pulling permits. Other than just as a courtesy, the ma, as the mayor said, to talk to them, but we have no. No other means of doing anything where we're not in contract with the developer for what they're not delivering on.
Polly, I have a question. What if it is a health and safety issue that is affecting all these homeowners? I mean, there, there are issues with a sewer. That to me, sewer backup is a health and safety issue. Erosion of slopes, which is going on unbelievably. I walked along Shoreline Drive today and I cannot believe the number of rocks. Almost over that are down the hillside. And there's issues also with. Improper venting of gas that is in the homes that you can actually within the homes and just outside the windows. You can smell gas that's being emitted from. The furnace room and the water heaters. And those to me, they're health and safety issues, which I thought Hideout had a responsibility to work with the developers about. These are internal issues. These are health and safety issues.
So I'm happy to look into that. However, those are all things that the owners too can, would have recourse with. You know, there is a covenant of habitability when you purchase a home. So those are all direct things that they should be able to go. Against the developer on, but I'm happy to look into further if there's any health, safety issues that we can do. Against the developer because.
What, particularly the erosion of the slopes and the fact that some of these homes are right on the border of a cliff. There's no fencing. There's nothing there to prevent somebody walking outside and go, and just falling down the hillside. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I think that there was some remediation. I believe, um if I'm not mistaken, I think that there was some remediation with Rustler um with some of these slope erosion. I don't know if Rustler was responsible for that or if the town stepped in and helped with that.
Russ Rustler was Rustler um residents in the HOA uh worked on that, Carolyn Rustler, but I will have Ryan take a look at those slopes. Uh I'm fairly certain that that while there are that there's that there are stones coming down, that the slopes in general are solid rock. They're not going to collapse. But I will have him look at those uh this week or next week when he's back um to see see if he thinks we need a geotech to look at that.
Okay, and and I'm sorry, I spoke out of turn. There's still a couple of hands that are up.
Yes.
Hey, hey, Carol, just to jump in, if you need any um thoughts on that, I'll be glad to share with you who we brought in um and specifically some two two engineers and they they actually the pressure was put on GCD to make some improvements. Um and they received some input from uh, you know, the results of these two engineers. I would say there's remedies um from everything I know on geotechnical and hill and sloping that's available. So there's no excuse not to have uh probably a better approach to that or.
Okay, thank you, Ralph. I will be contacting you. Okay.
Uh anything else? Okay, from there, let me move on. I hope.
I just wanna wait, Mayor, just so you're gonna call GCD, Mayor, you're gonna call GCD as a courtesy. Ryan's gonna look at slopes.
Yeah.
Polly Polly's gonna see if there's anything in the statute that.
Yeah.
The town can do and Ralph is gonna get in touch with Carol and help facilitate the discussion between Rustler and Shoreline to so they they can work through strategies, right?
Share share the professional contacts, the geotech guys.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And there's still two more hands up.
Yeah, there's three. I'm just.
Oh, okay.
Trying to finish up this first one, Carol, so please bear with me. Um so I I don't see your hand back up, Carolyn Davis, so I'm assuming we've given you a path forward, at least for now. Um the next person um looking to uh get input from is Mary Freeman. Mary, you should be able to unmute and uh.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your time. Um a lot of my issues or two of my issues that basically been addressed at this point, um the erosion of the slopes um is is definitely an issue, not so much that I don't believe that the our houses are all gonna just fall down the cliff so much as there's some really large boulders that are falling into the road and then into the sidewalks um which has me very concerned. Um and you sure wouldn't want to park a car anywhere near that if you if there was a problem because you you would just have it disturbed. Um the second issue is walking from my front yard into my backyard. I have a drop off that's about ten to twelve to fifteen feet. Um and it's a drop off. It isn't roll. It's a it's a it's a it's a cliff. And um and there's spots there between my home and that drop off where I barely have two feet to walk. And then there's one spot that's near my air conditioning unit where I have less than two feet to walk. And it's very concerning to me. I have my grandchildren coming. Well, first of all, it's concerning to me anyway because it it's quite a slope and it slopes towards the cliff, so it it's it's a little frightening. But I have my grandchildren coming this winter and um having them walk from the front yard to the backyard is is just too treacherous um to even consider. Um.
Could you give me your unit number?
Unit twenty-five. So I spoke with Glenn from GCD and he talked about, you know, possibly fence up like it was a big favor to me, but um to me, it's a it's a true safety issue. You know, when we bought our homes, you know, you pick a lot and you build the house and you pick all your things out and it's all lovely, but you don't really know what you're getting as far as your yard is concerned. Um, you know, I would never have bought this house if I could not have walked, if I couldn't walk into the backyard or I couldn't safely, you know, have a child walk into that backyard. So that is my concern besides the um the erosion. Yeah, then that's it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Where where in uh where in Massachusetts are you from?
The Worcester area.
Okay.
Yeah, it's those eyes. They give me away all the time.
My hometown, I I went to Worcester Tech, so.
Oh, you did? Okay, okay. Yeah, I grew up in Rochdale. Do you know that?
Yeah, so that's why I recognize the uh the general area.
Oh, that's funny. Yeah.
Okay.
So Mayor, can I make a comment on this one?
Yeah.
You know, I take a look. I ride my bike through there all the time. I take a look up and I see these cliffs. I'm gonna call them cliffs from the backyard um which has no fencing. Um can is it possible for Ryan to just take a look and see? I I know that Shoreline was approved before our time. Uh we did not approve it. This council did not approve it. And can can is that something Brian can look at while he's out there looking at slopes?
Yeah, I have it down to look specifically at this at uh Ms. Freeman's house there.
And and just the there, but but other places um as well. But yeah, first start with um Ms. Friedman's place, but it's a huge concern and she's absolutely right. Throw a little snow on top of that and some kids running around and you're looking for trouble.
Well, and we do have, you know, our our new town code revisions speak to, you know, when fences are required and such. And I know that that um, you know, is wasn't vested at the time that the development was approved. But again, this is a health and safety matter, so I would think we we ought to be able to lean on the developer to come up to current code on on those health and safety issues.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, Jerry. It's really important.
I totally agree.
Well, yeah, and you're living it, Carol.
I'm living there. And I need a fence in my backyard. I mean, that whole thing is just keepsy brooding.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, I don't know why they, you know, what what were they renege done? And Jerry, I wasn't here at that point, but in you in the area that you are, did they put that in as a retrofit on the on some of those fences? Do you remember?
Uh we moved in in the end of twenty sixteen and the fence was there on Burlap Mountain. And the only other fences I'm aware of are those that uh at at the end of Shoreline uh just before the dirt road, there's a couple of units that have fences on them.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree. I noticed the fences were there from the beginning, Jerry, on Burlap Mountain and um it seems like they did the right thing over there. It, you know, they did the right thing over there, but not not in Shoreline.
Yeah, we'll we'll get it looked at and see what we think we can encourage them to do. So all right, uh the next name is uh Rachel. I don't have your surname, but uh you should be uh you you have the opportunity to speak now.
Uh hi, Phil. This is actually Brian Cooper and it's my wife Rachel's.
Oh, okay.
The computer we're using here. Um so actually, I have some information uh regarding some of these issues as my illustrious role, uh which I've not been performing very well on the infrastructure committee. Uh lately, I've had some time to to investigate some of these and I had have had some discussions about these issues with um with Ryan Taylor as as well. So um first things first, the sewer. Uh you missed the meeting, Phil, but we went over the sewer plan, uh the the model, the GIS model that uh Ryan's company has built very nicely. Um and we're in unit thirty-one, which is almost at the end of the middle of North Shoreline Court where where it makes a U-turn, almost a U-turn to the left and goes up the upper level. So we're pretty high up and we've had three sewer backups into our back into our lower bathtub spaced out several months apart. And the second one, um the first two GCD took care of. The second one, they didn't do anything. Um in in the second case, um the plumber who came by from GCD, I happened to be home when he was there. He said the blockage was a hundred yards from our house and it was a soft blockage. And so I talked to Ryan about the model and I said, and by the way, the the plumber's recommendation was flush more water down the pipes. And I said, well, being an engineer, I know what that means is that the slope is too steep and so the liquids are outrunning the solids and that's why you get these soft blockages. And and uh Ryan said the same thing. I had this confirmed in a later conversation with John Clarkson, who's the engineer for Wasatch County. Um and I'll get to that in a minute. Um so Ryan says, yes, based on their model, uh there are some sections and I think I'm, you know, we're in one of them here in in Shoreline Phase One where the slopes are too steep. So um there are other plans that he's going to bring forth uh to the council, I think, for remediation. Uh there are several areas in the sewer system that unfortunately we've already accepted as a town that probably shouldn't have been. Um and but one of those things is regular cleaning and hopefully we can get um uh I guess it's JCC, JSSC, I guess.
They're doing they're doing uh scoping and and.
Right now. They're flushing and then scoping, yeah. Um and uh and the issue with the pump, by the way, is uh the sewage pump that is in the at the bottom, which we're like Phase Two and the ones that uh the late new builders were gonna put in, they were gonna put in three more. Uh no pun intended, but these were crappy pumps.
Yeah.
And uh the deal that Ryan uh came up, which was great, which was he I convinced, I guess, the Lakeside or Lakeview, whatever it is, uh builder to not put in three additional pumps, which would be more problem for the town to maintain, but instead to take that money and and put it towards upgrading the one that Shoreline has to a much bigger, more robust pump that can handle everything.
Right.
Um another issue is that um Sorry Hawk and Golden Eagle sewer lines drain into the Shoreline sewer. And then the Shoreline pump pumps the sewage back up to two forty-eight to go into the main line when they could have just had a gravity feed into that line to begin with. I have no idea why they did that. It cost the builder more money and it was dumb. And it's gonna overload the uh the sewage system in Shoreline, so.
Our plan is to is to take Shoreline and Golden, uh sorry, uh Sorry Hawk and Gold Needle off of that current system and go into the the JS's D main.
Right, exactly. That's that. I don't know why they they tunneled under the road and much, yeah, anyway, stupid. Um as far as the roads go, um so I did talk to Ryan about that. He he agrees that these slopes are too steep and that the the rock is too crumbly and that creates a safety hazard for drivers and walkers on the road below from the falling rock. Um so I contacted um the Wasatch County engineer, John Clarkson, had a nice conversation with him for about a half hour about this development and in that situation. And he said, this the Wasatch County and state code is for that kind of rock, which is considered unstable rock. They're supposed to slope it back two feet horizontally for every foot vertical and it's not even close to that. I'm running sure it's one to one, right? Um if they can't do that, which they can't in the cases, otherwise it'd be cantilevering homes at this point. The um uh and and Mary's two-foot backyard would become a cantilevered cliff. There the uh remediation for that uh is probably expensive. It's either shot creating the the entire wall there to stabilize it, which is pretty expensive and kind of ugly. Um or building uh lower retaining walls like they did on North Shoreline Court on the entrance on the corner there.
Right.
Which is also which is also kind of expensive, but that's much nicer looking. The unfortunately, what I asked the county if there was any safety code that we could cite as a violation. And he said, well, yeah, if it were in the county, yes, but the town unfortunately overrules the county, which is really odd. It's the first day that I've been in where the it's reverse um the order of precedence. So he said, unfortunately, the county can't cite them with anything. Um he said, however.
Not sure that.
Uh the county adheres to the American Public Works Association standards.
So do we.
And those are those you can have an engineer cite as a safety issue as a as a national standard, right? And that may be something to go back with a builder on.
We 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 have adopted APWA and and the uh the um National Building Code as well, so I I'd be surprised that 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 we have anything more lenient um in our code than what county has, other than, you know, our road whiffs, which were um which were uh approved prior to my administration.
Okay, so if we're citing uh APWA, then you've got a very good cause of because that's that's what Wasatch County uses. So that two to one ratio is what what comes from that. And by the way, they said on um on Longview Drive, as you come down into Shoreline, you go by the cliff there where it actually overhangs. He says that's supposed to be back one to one for solid rock. So um now that's pretty solid there. So I'm not sure we have an issue there, but.
It's been that way for some time, so.
Yeah, it's been quite a few years, right? So it's it's probably okay. Um there are areas, I've I've walked along um Shoreline Drive and there are several areas where they could um where they have room to cut it back, which might be the cheapest thing to do, you know, just take a a excavator in there.
Yeah, it would be better looking. I mean, they could put gunite all over that place, but it wouldn't be particularly attractive.
It would be pretty ugly and it's very expensive to do too. And and again, the frost might get under it and crack it, right? Because that rock is very porous and that's why it keeps flaking off as, you know, water gets in there, freezes and especially in this time of year, right? As we get freeze thaw cycles, it keeps knocking stuff off. Um one other thing I thought of, which I don't know, I'm not a, you know, civil engineer. Um but I noticed that on um North Shoreline Court on the inside of the curve, so to speak, where they did not put a sidewalk, they put sort of a riprap uh about three foot wide area. That traps most of the rock falling from there, not a hundred percent, but most of it. Um so even digging uh and that's level, if you dig a sort of a ditch in there or a cup shape
Yeah.
riprap uh basin, so to speak, to cat is a catch basin for the rock, that might be another acceptable uh solution. The the only issue with that is once the town accepts the road, eventually that would have to be cleaned out, you know, every every five years or something, you'd have to probably clean the debris out. So those are my ideas on on what we should do, but uh what Ryan suggested to me was um that we have not accepted that road yet. We've only got like, I think, a hundred thousand dollar performance bond uh with GCD.
Right.
They might they might just walk away from, but if we can cite an actual uh, you know, code violation and if that's the town code, which it sounds like maybe if we're we're saying we're enforcing the APCW uh
Yeah.
BWA.
Yeah.
Code, then we can just make them do it. I think we should do that. And his other suggestion was before the town accepts the Phase Two Shoreline uh building permits that we insist they fix these others' health and safety issues first. And that would that's the only real forcing function we have from a financial aspect, right?
Well, I'll talk with Ryan about that, Brian. Thank you.
And and by the way, we're having an infrastructure meeting uh every two weeks now, so.
Yeah, I I sent a note to you guys asking if I could participate in the next one, but I haven't seen an invite yet, so.
Yeah, I've gotta get, uh yeah, Jan owns the uh the Zoom thing, so I'll I'll come. I think I think next week we're having the next one. So, yeah, I'll make sure you're invited to that.
Thanks.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, a question about that infrastructure meeting. Does it have minutes?
Uh I don't know. I wasn't there, Chris, so I don't know. Jan, we, has it been minuteed, Brian?
Kathleen was in attendance. I don't know if she was recording it or not. We've invited Kathleen to be on that committee.
Yeah, she, that's right, we did, yeah.
Can I, Jan, can I request that there's a minutes taken so that you can share them with the council members? I know that we can't all attend these meetings, so I would really like to know what's happening on the infrastructure committee and I'm sure that others, you know, my colleagues here on the council would also like that.
Right. Is it possible for us to be um notified of it?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Carol, um the committee just, it's, I guess you can be notified of it, but if we have more than two council members. two council members present, then it has to become a public meeting, has to be noticed, all that kind of stuff. So unfortunately, by being a member of the council, it's hard to be also a resident to some of these things. So we have, the committee would have to watch that. If there's less, if there's two or less, then there's no problem. But if there's more than two, then we, the meeting can't be held.
Okay. So just, you know, let us notify us and then maybe the first two council members that would like to attend can be part of it.
Yep. Just as a reminder to everybody that if there's more than two, it's an open and public meeting.
Okay.
I, I would personally love it if Carol would be able to attend since she's a huge stakeholder.
Right. I'd be happy to attend.
Okay.
Mayor, isn't it customary that someone from council, uh, is on these various committee committees?
Yes.
Do we have someone on infrastructure now that Vitis is gone?
No, we haven't replaced, uh, the council member on that committee.
Well, maybe Carol wants to be that council member.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay, we can do that. Okay. Uh, Brian, your, your hand's still up. Are you, was that?
I, I was just trying to answer you. Yes, I, I had muted myself. So, um, no, so welcome Carol to the infrastructure committee.
Great.
Um, we're going to be meeting every two weeks until we don't need to meet that often.
Okay.
The next meeting will be next week. Um, and, and Jan will send out the notice. Um, and we're going to go over, we went over the sewer plan last, last week. We're going to go over, uh, the water plan next week.
Okay.
And I was hoping we could talk about the road, um, embankment issues as well at that meeting. And that's what's on the plan right now, on the agenda right now.
And, and Brian, um, I just add to that, this is Ralph speaking. I, I would just say, if you need any input on the sloping, I've had, I've traveled around town with some experts and, um, they've really given a, in a, it kind of a rough report to me personally on, on what's transpired, but a lot of that was from the past. Um, there, there are a number of options that a good contractor could use. Some of them are pretty expensive, but again, that's just part and parcel of the, you know, the landscape and geomorphology of what we live in here. So.
Right. Yeah, the, the, the county engineers said that red ledges have the same problem and also the Jordan L Parkway. Um, and they, they forced the builders to cut farther back into the hill, right? And so in the case of the Jordan L Parkway, they actually reduced some of the building lots because they had to cut the hill back more to keep the, uh, the rocks from crumbling into the road, right? So it is, it's a common geological problem here, right?
And, and where they invest the most money are along highways and roads, big highways and roads, where there's no other alternative but to cut up. And, and, but you know, for, for towns, that shouldn't be the case. And, but yeah, we're saddled with history versus, um, you know, with some of the, what some of the code is now.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Ralph. I'll reach out to you on that.
Sure.
Thanks, Ralph. All right, uh, we have a hand from, uh, John Leoni. John? You can unmute.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, great. Let me lower my hand. Um, so, uh, Mayor, thank you for, for taking my question. Um, this is John Leoni. I live at, uh, I own and live at, uh, eleven two ninety-three North Shoreline Drive. Um, I'm going to mirror some of the, um, concerns that my fellow neighbors are experiencing with G C D. Um, I just, first I want to let you know that I'm a mechanical electrical engineer. Um, I deal with.
Committee's for you.
I, uh, I have, um, experience, uh, heavily with, uh, building and construction and, um, have a fair amount of good friends who are civil engineers. So, um, I've questioned them about quite a few things. Um, so the first, the first item is the slope erosion. Uh, I just want to point out that, you know, putting a fence on the top of, uh, the slopes is, is not going to retain the slopes. You're still going to have that problem. So, um, it's more of a, a safety factor. Um, but in my particular unit, my unit's number twenty-two, I'm at the very end of North Shoreline Drive. Um, yeah, I'm right next to the four parking lot space. And my back area has gone from about, I want to say about four feet from the edge of the, um, of the edge of my lower deck out to, um, out to where the slope drops off, to now about two and a half feet and it's continuing to erode. Um, one of my particular concerns is, uh, you know, if there's, uh, we, we experienced a tremor up here from the earthquake that occurred down, down in Salt Lake. Um, one of the first things I did was ran out of the house because I was very concerned about my particular situation and being on the corner. The, the rest of the slope area has been covered with dirt and has been sloped down as, as a, as a lower grade, a lower slope grade. And my area is a direct drop off and it is eroding quickly. Um, any dirt that's in there is disappearing and the rocks are falling out from, from the slope. So, and this is an area that looks like they did not finish off properly and I have great, great concerns on that. Um, I, I would assume that this is a, um, a, a slope requirement for, um, grade that would be under your town, um, our town codes and requirements. Um, and that would fall under a state and national code for safety. So that would be one area that I would look into if I was a town to try to enforce this. Um, I'm going to move on to the next item because that's, you, you've already spoken about that and I think, uh, I just want to express my, my concern on that one. The other one that was brought up, um, and I've done some engineering work on this, the existing, the existing, um, hot water heater installation in our, in our units is not properly installed based on the exhaust piping that they installed. Um, there's a certain distance and amount of elbows that are, are, um, um, allowable for a total distance. You figure out the distance of pipe and you figure out how many elbows, how many forty-fives, and each elbow consists of, uh, six or seven or eight feet length equivalent. And then you're allowed to have a certain total length when you add it all up. The total length is, is right on the edge of being acceptable. However, there is another problem. The manufacturer recommends that there's a distance between the exhaust and the intake. So currently it's less than the required distance that the manufacturer requires. In some areas, they've already installed like a telescope separating this distance between the supply and the return. Those are adequately installed with the proper distance. However, the additional elbows and lengths well exceeds the, uh, maximum allowed. So you have, you have a code issue here based on manufacturers', um, direct recommendations. And that should be something that should have been looked into, um, I would think by this, the town, um, engineer overseeing this. So that's, that's a major item and that doesn't have anything, um, to do with, uh, the complaints about, um, sound, smell, distance from an opening to a window, which is very, which I believe is also too close according to manufacturers and state and possibly, uh, national, um, codes, which needs to be looked into. I haven't done that because quite frankly, I just don't have the time right now. Um, but that should be looked into and, and be commented on by the, by the, uh, city of Hydeout, town of Hydeout. Um, the sewer smell and backups that we're experiencing. Um, three of my four bathrooms are good. One is not. I get a smell from my bathroom, my master bathroom. And my main kitchen sink is the worst of all of them. I get a constant smell coming up from the, um, uh, what's, I, I'm trying to think of the name of it. It is a, um, it's a vertical pipe with a, uh, anti, uh, exhaust, but it allows, um, allows the, I went to a backflow, sorry?
Have a backflow, but all, you know, all our source were supposed to be installed with a, with a backflow device so that, so that these backups that are being described shouldn't happen. So there's something going on there that needs to be reviewed.
So, uh, I'm not sure if it is the actual back, um, backflow valve that's located in that cap valve or if it's something else, but I get smells very, very badly in, in the kitchen area. And I believe a lot of other people are experiencing the same thing and you just, you know, over time you do get used to it as long as you have the windows open. But now that the windows are closed and it's in the winter, it's a lot worse.
It's not exactly an acceptable solution. You know, open your windows, it doesn't, doesn't cut it.
Hey, thank you. Um, and again, that's, that's a, that's a code issue. That's, um, that needs to be properly addressed. Um, the other items, uh, that I'm, I'm going to point out, um, may not be as a code issue. Um, because I looked this one up, but I'm not certain if it's a town issue for the guidance. Um, the standing seam roofs that we have, uh, have, have an exposure for snow falling off the roof. And I'm not talking about just a little bit of snow. Right now I have about a foot and a half that's ready to drop down, um, from the standing seam, uh, roof. Um, there should be snow stops. This is, uh, not only a structural, um, issue with the snow dropping on the lower, um, window wells and the covers of the window wells, but it's also a, a health, a safety if someone is underneath it when it drops down. Um, last year, uh, it, it did drop down on me. Luckily it hit my shoulder. I did not get injured. I brought this up with the town. Um, I did not hear anything back from an email that I sent back, uh, a while back. I think it was, uh, almost, uh, nine months ago about this. That's an item I, I think you guys should be looking to as well. So I know, um, I think Polly, I, I think it was Polly Samuels that said that it's not a responsibility, uh, for this group. But I think representative based on the codes, um, and, uh, whether they're local, um, um, in the county or state or, or, or national codes, whether in NFPA, whatever the code guidelines are, they should be adhered to and they are enforceable. So, um, this is clearly in my eyes, if they're breaking any of those codes at the responsibility of the builder to correct. And it should not fall on the owners and it should not fall on the town of Hydeout. That's, that's all I have to say right now. There are many other issues that G C D has not, they have come in and done some repairs, but there's a lot of items that they did not take care of. Um, I like Brian. I think he's done, uh, a great job trying to play a middleman. Um, but he was just in over his head because, uh, they were trying to do too much without enough, uh, um, workforce to get the work completed. Thank you for hearing me out.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Ryan should have been here tonight. Didn't know we were going to have all these Ryan items. Uh, Kurt, you're, uh, next.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay. So I, I would just suggest, and I'm sure Ralph is going to remember this and probably Jerry as well. Ralph spearheaded, uh, this issue when we were on, all on the planning commission together. Uh, we had a, we had a hearing on, uh, what was going on over in what is euphemistically called Burlap Mountain. Uh, and I think it did force G C D to do some remediation. And I would urge the town to, uh, once again, sort of shine a spotlight on the issues that, that all of these residents have, have brought to the fore. And I would urge the mayor and the council to take a less legalistic view of what our, um, abilities are or obligations are. And I would suggest that, given what I've heard here tonight and all of the things I've heard from individual residents, that we just should, should be, uh, putting, um, G C D's feet to the fire. And that includes, um, stopping further, uh, permitting, uh, down in shoreline two. Uh, or just having another public session where, um, these issues are a focus to force, um, Mike and others at G C D to do the right thing. And that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Kurt. It's, uh, clearly based on what I'm hearing tonight, we need to do, we need to ratchet it up a bit, no doubt about it. Okay, uh, the next hand is Jeff Foot. Uh, you don't seem, you seem to be on video, Jeff, but not on sound. So I don't know how to give you permission to talk. Let's see if we start your video, maybe the sound will come up.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure how, because I'm not seeing the microphone, but I can, oh, oh, you dialed in. Okay. Yeah, we can hear you now. Yeah.
Okay, I, I'll just offer a few more items of support for your discussion with G C D. Um, we've had, uh, well, we've been here a year and a half. We're between Brian and Mary and we're wallmates with Carol. And we've had zero follow-up in eighteen months. Um, I, I don't know if we fell through a crack in their system or if they lack a system. Um, we do have a list with them and we have lots of discussion, um, and, and it seems they like to call it our list when it's not our list, it's their list of items that, um, pretty much from the beginning have been, um, resonant. Um, we had a, we have a significant presence of, uh, gas in our back deck area. Uh, and there was one morning that, uh, it was bothered me enough. I contacted Dominion and had them come out to see if there was a, a leak somewhere in the area. They looked and measured and red-tagged our water heater and, uh, passed that red tag on to G C D. And there's been, they've been non-responsive in, in that whole thing. In fact, they did send one of their contractors out. Um, who said there's no, uh, there's no self-fault being reported, so therefore there's nothing wrong. And then the only thing they, they did in addition to that was to turn Carol's gas off, which, um, took her two days to realize when she had cold water. Um, so, um, I guess the takeaway from our experience, and we recognize these are issues between the owners and the builder. They're not city issues, but to, to just the takeaway that from our experience, we have a general contractor working in our town that has no quality control function. And that's concerning, but particularly for what they have for future plans. Uh, we should, we should probably be trying to influence them to, um, develop some kind of a quality control function in their business. Um, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say something at the tail of the, so it, yeah, I, I kind of echo, uh, you know, Kurt's sentiment here is that, you know, ratcheting it up a little bit, I don't think is called for at this point. I think we need to, you know, full court press this and make sure we get some attention of G C D. You know, I think quality control certainly is one aspect, but it sounds like most of these are falling into warranty department that just isn't, uh, you know, being followed through. And, you know, I live in a G C D home here in Rustler and I can echo the, the warranty side of it took a long time. And, you know, I, I think it used to be better and we've seen some folks change, that role has changed. And, uh, you know, the guy that was in charge when we took ownership was very good. But I, it hasn't, it's gone downhill since then. So. But I it hasn't, it's gone downhill since then. So, yeah, I think we need to let GCD know that there there's a whole lot of uh uproar within the town and, you know, they're continuing to build and not not making sure that their homeowners are happy with the product. That ultimately is going to affect their sales potential.
You know, I went, I remember asking GCD you know, what the what their plan of action was, and they said, well, we've tried this and we've tried that. And we're gonna try this again. And I, you know, I think my question to them was, you know, the the old Einstein adage, which was, you know, insanity is a definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. Um I don't know if that kind of quip um, you know, moved them, but they they did make some changes. Um there's, you know, I I think to Kurt's point and to everyone's point here is I gotta call him back on the carpet and say, um you know, enough is enough. Um you gotta try something else. Um and and look at a at a long-term fix on if a number of things that sounds like um uh the shoreline's going through some of the things that Rustler went through.
Do we have the ability as a council to ask the developer to come and meet with us and, you know, they they talk to some of these issues?
They meet with us monthly, uh but we can ask for a special meeting.
Well, yeah, I mean, the monthly meeting is, you know, isn't a a town council meeting. I think having, you know, to sit uh before the council and, you know, provide some answers to what we're hearing from the public might be called for.
I think we could invite Glenn to to address the council at the next meeting to talk about the fact that we're getting significant comments from citizens on this on this project.
I I'd ask Mike Stewart to come as well, because Mike attended the meeting that Ralph talked about about Burlap Mountain. And and we got some action following that meeting, so.
Yeah.
And Glenn would take small actions. I think you're absolutely right, Jerry. You know, you need some big actions on on some of these kinds of issues.
Right.
Yeah, this is Brian again. I wanted to jump in with a couple of ideas on that and following up with with John. Thanks to John for reminding about the hot water heater issues because uh John brought this up and then I looked into it too, and I actually looked up the Utah uh plumbing code, which in our case with these uh high-efficiency powered fan uh intake and exhaust heaters, the code deliberately says it defaults to the manufacturer's installation instructions. So that is the code. So I downloaded the instructions, look, which are very detailed and PDF form, looked them up, and they are definitely in violation of that. Not just the length, but the number of um elbows as well for the for the small, they put the smallest size pipe in, right? They put in two and a half inch pipe. Should have been three inch. They also, as John pointed out, don't have the right um distance between the um exhaust and the intake. So we actually get exhaust circling back into the intake, which in time will ruin the hot water heater. And also it's close to the uh the dining room window. So if you have the dining room window open, you can get exhaust fumes into your house. Uh it should have been vented through the roof at any rate. Uh so I highlighted the two documents where they were violating this. I sent them three emails on this. They keep asking me to forward it to somebody else. I've I've done that at least three times. Between John and I, we came up with three alternatives for how they could fix it. And we've gotten zero response. And this is on all fifty homes. This is a this is a uh definitely a safety issue. So but I think if the town could help on this, if we could have a special meeting just on health and safety issues, it would be the hot water heater venting, the sewer um drainage issues and and I'm, we don't have this sewer gas problem, but I'm hearing this from local residents. A bunch of them have said they've had this, especially in their uh kitchen sinks. That tells me that somehow the sewer system is sucking out all the water from the traps. Yeah, that might be a symptom of, you know, too much of a slope, right? And when one enough water goes down, it it empties the traps and then, of course, lets the gas come back. That's definitely a safety issue. And then, of course, the roads uh, you know, erosion and cliff erosion, right? But I think those three things are enough to have a special session with them and just hit them over the head and say, look, you know, we're not gonna approve any more development until you fix these issues.
I'm gonna jump on what he just said as well. This is John Leoni. Um can you hear me okay?
Yes, John.
Okay, great. Um so one of the things that one of the solutions we came up with for them is that they installed a three-inch pipe through the roof down to the um the existing mechanical room. Um and it's supposed to be meant for um I'm sorry, mine is radon. Thank you. Supposed to be used for the radon exhaust flow. That can be utilized for one of the two pipes that needs to be exhausted or brought in for fresh air for the 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 hot water heater. They can install a second line, bring it up through the roof, and you would have it exhausting through the roof away from the windows, away from our our decks and and be a safer, more healthier installation. They can also use those existing two-inch pipes as an exhaust for radon, which is uh if anyone needs to install it in to their system, into their into the basement if they're having problems. I did not get that checked, so I don't know what the what the average count is here, if there is a radon problem in our area or not. But uh there is a solution to this. It's a lot simpler than um than GCD made it out to be. Um and uh he's right. If this is falling under the manufacturer's guidelines, then the town or the city can impose and require GCD to properly do these installations. My only concern is that um if we, if you provided them with a C of O, does that prohibit you from going back um after finding a defect after a CO a C of O was provided?
I don't I don't know, John, but we'll get I'm gonna get the engineer involved and we'll 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 peel his onion back and try and understand what we can do. We can certainly put them in front of the council and ask them to describe their plan for remediation and uh, you know, they need to, they'll they'll hear from us that they, we don't feel comfortable granting them any more any more permits without without them taking a more serious approach to these concerns.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
They they might end up destroying us. I don't know that we can they can stop us from issuing permits, but we'll we can certainly slow them down.
Well, the other thing that we could potentially do, Mayor, is, you know, uh more detailed inspections in what they're doing now and uh make sure that they're not repeating the same mistakes and and increasing our level of inspection.
Okay. All right, so we spent.
Be as a reference, um Mayor, um just let me know. I'd I'd be happy to speak with the engineer. Um as my counterpart was just speaking, uh would probably do the same.
Okay, that's fine. So we're uh we spent an hour on this. We've got a pretty strong message. I think we uh we probably uh at this point don't need to spend more time on on the shoreline issue, other than we've got a path forward and we'll we'll uh we'll attack that. Uh I'll get Ryan involved and we'll we'll start figuring out what our options are. All right, I'm looking at this point. I'm not seeing other hands, so no, no other hands. All right, so I'm gonna close the public input and uh go to uh back to the agenda and let's address the uh public hearing items. The first one um is has been revised to reflect a continuation. We had noticed that we were going to do a resolution adjusting and amending the revenues expenditures of the fiscal year budget. Um but uh that is not ready, so we're um continuing that to a date, recommending we continue that to a date certain, which is uh which would be our December meeting, which would be the tenth of December.
Mayor, we have another meeting.
There are no issues with the budget. We have, we're in good shape financially. Uh we're just uh required uh to make sure that the budget reflects um the way the spend is and and you're only allowed to have a certain amount of space in that, so we have to amend it to to uh to reflect where the where the funds, where the spending is and where it isn't. We've done, we've done this before in prior years, so uh that's what we're gonna be doing for the December uh session.
Mayor, we have another meeting in two weeks. Do do we need another month to get this uh ready or can we do it? Oh, you're right. No, it's Thanksgiving, isn't it?
It's Thanksgiving, Jerry.
It's Thanksgiving. Never mind.
If that's okay with you.
Never mind.
Really?
Um Mayor, could I suggest that you open the public hearing in case there is anyone who attended this evening to talk about the budget item? Since it was noticed?
Yeah, happy to open it, although we don't have any uh material to talk about. Um but if you have a question about the budget, we can certainly uh look to uh address that. I'm not seeing any questions on that one. So again, my recommendation is a motion to continue.
John has his hand up.
Yes, there is a hand up.
Okay, John, if you're talking about the budget, go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Here we go. I'm so sorry. Um I just want to make sure that we can see um the budget and comment on it at a later time, because this was obviously not ready to be reviewed.
Yeah, budget, the budget um ended in our our monthly reports are are on the website. Um so you can see that at any time. Uh I don't have the proposed adjustments yet, because the treasurer hasn't finished making those changes to put the proposal together.
But we will have a chance to review the adjustments and comment on them with you.
Absolutely.
It'll be in the meeting packet for that meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Thanks, Jerry.
The budget is, the budget is um is on the website, John. You can see the current budget anytime and and the this the progress of year-to-date um on that budget.
I've seen it before, but uh not recently, so I just wanted to make sure we had another chance to
Oh, yeah.
comment on it. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. So I would like a a a motion to continue to a date certain be in December tenth for the budget item.
So moved.
Second.
Who is the who is the second? I'm sorry.
Chris can take it.
Chris, okay. Okay. Bob?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. The next one. So this is approval of an ordinance providing technical corrections to the following provisions of the town code related to land use, which is title three, ten, eleven and twelve, and is related to the ordinance of um um twenty twenty oh six, which um which is when we did, which is when we implemented these these changes and to remove an internal inconsistency regarding hours of operation, title ten. So so this is the language here. So this there's a couple of things. If you if you guys remember, when we did all this, um we we spent quite a bit of time on this. Jerry did a super job leading us through it. Um there are no um there were um there was no uh major issues with what we approved, but we did um due to clerical error, uh put an earlier version of the exhibits attached to the ordinance and did not reflect the changes that the town council discussed and intended to include. Um so um so now there's an internal conflict in the code between section five oh four point uh oh seven five. Um also, which we also uh got the hours of work, you if if the more um long, long-serving members of the council remember, we changed the hours of work uh and and we created a a kind of noise element uh as well as far as construction work. So construction was supposed to go seven to seven Monday through Friday and eight to seven on Saturday, Sunday or holiday. Um and um when we put this code in with the uh with the earlier revisions, we moved the hours of work moved to nine P M. Um and so we had some builders working to nine P M. and we're getting a lot of complaints from residents uh because it didn't match our ordinance. Uh but because the code was newer than the ordinance, it it superseded it and made it such that they were uh in their in their right to work to nine P M. So we're gonna get that cleaned up as well. So um
So Mayor, you're saying there were two issues. One is the the titles that were included in the packet were the wrong version.
Right.
And the second is this hours of
Right.
uh this hours issue.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So the titles that were the wrong ones just had internal inconsistencies in terms of citing to the wrong subsections of the code and also uh referring to the wrong zone.
Okay.
So um just to be, you know, conservative, we're just having you pretty much ratify what you what you already intended to do.
Okay, that's why I noticed the uh the red line in uh title twelve and not the others.
There should have been a red line in all of them.
Yeah, I I didn't notice it in the others. I'd noticed it in in.
Yeah, like title three had one
Okay.
wrong citation internal, so maybe you just didn't happen to see it.
Yep.
So basically, we're cleaning up the mismatch between what we approved and what we attached as approved. And then the second thing we're cleaning up is the hours of work to get them back in line with what we had previously agreed to uh before we dug out this older copy.
So we're going back to the hours that were declared in the ordinance, not in the title?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, which are the hours that are reflected here, seven to seven and eight to seven on the weekends and holidays.
And what's and what's the status of this with Unicode? Do they have the the most recent version? I've had some mixed input as to.
No, like, and that's um that's why we say here that we would uh we would get this officially into the code um next week. So it reflects this, Ralph.
Okay.
Good. What's in Unicode is the is the wrong stuff on this, which is why when when I cited a builder for working too late, he said it's in your code.
Yeah.
I went to your website and it says I can work till nine, so that's kind of how we got became aware that we had that problem. So.
Okay, so what are we asking of the the council here then?
A a um this is an ordinance, so I need um I need a motion to adopt this ordinance uh where the language is stated here. I don't know, Polly, not Polly, Alicia, do we know what number this would be?
Um I believe it's twenty twenty eleven.
Okay. Twenty twenty. I could write twenty twenty dash eleven. So a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash eleven uh providing for technical corrections to the following provisions of the town code and related and related to land use. But before we do that, this is an open, uh this is a public hearing item. So I would open for uh for public input, again, just for the public's awareness. This was all done at a public hearing, all the language that was originally. This was all done at a public hearing, all the language that was originally uh approved was at a public hearing. And these are simply technical corrections, but if there are questions, we'll address those.
And that happened in July, as stated in that first whereas.
Yeah, July twenty third, twenty twenty. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Which is fine. So. In which case, back to. The exhibits. Uh is the whole, this is the whole thing, guys, so I'm not gonna.
Yeah, that's all of title.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go through all.
Three, ten, eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelve here, but they're all in here. So um, so that's what we're looking for is a motion to clean this, a motion to approve twenty twenty dash eleven. Um. Providing for technical corrections to the, for the. Following provisions of the town code related to land use, titles three, ten, eleven and twelve.
Well, since I'm, since I worked on this and I, I know Jerry started working on this in the planning board, I'll make a motion um to move this.
And I'll second it then.
Okay, motion, Ralph. Second, Jerry. Chris?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed. Very nice. So let me. I gotta move these things to the other side of my screen so I can scroll more effectively. Instead of going. Okay, so those are the public hearing items. The next item is um. Approval of the bills to be paid. And we got some whoppers.
And you're gonna have to zoom in on that.
Yeah.
I am. So Jan, if you can uh.
Most of our quote whoppers were um to do with the annexation. Uh there were also some legal bills relating to impact fees. Um, most of the expenses have been passed through, most of the large expenses, and they have been billed. As of today.
Okay. Um. Chris T O, is that one month or is that multiple months?
That's one month and we received another set of bills today. They're, they're just off of our schedule, so. All right, those were Octobers.
Wow, and and none of that was passed through or some of it was?
Some of it was passed through. We had G I S um expenses.
G I S should go to uh, should be going to the enterprise fund. Jan?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
G I S, G I S is all water and sewer line mapping, so they should be going to the enterprise fund.
Okay.
So help me understand, I've got ten K for T O engineers in this top section and the expenses passed through. Looks like I got a total of about twenty seven thousand for T O and pass through. So does that mean their total bill was like thirty seven thousand or?
Yeah.
Help me under, yes. So the ten thousand in the upper section, none of that was passed through?
Correct.
Correct, but it, it should go into enterprise.
Okay.
It's a chunk of it should go into enterprise. The G I S stuff should definitely go in enterprise.
I'll recode that.
Okay. The other thing they're working on, Jerry, is uh, you know, the water and sewer models, but um, but again, those should go into enterprise as well. So if there's anything on those models in there, Jan, that should move down as well. And then uh. The York, Howell and Guiman, Jan, is that? Is some of that rebillable or is that all associated with uh, with uh impact fees?
Um, it's all um firm-related, unfortunately, and it's for multiple months. We had a backlog of.
Okay.
Dan building.
One month, okay. Stay in a kitchen up. Okay. Unicode is an annual fee. Health insurance is for our staff. Um. Small amount on signs. There's the pass through, which is significant. And then in the enterprise fund, really, that's the standard, those are the standard costs, pretty much there. Questions from council on the bills? Okay, take that as no. And then I would need a motion to pay the bills. So moved, it's Bob. Thank you.
I'll second.
Carol, second. Thank you. Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. We can keep the lights on one more month.
Carol, you're gonna have to introduce your cat.
My cat just loves um Zoom. She just wants to be part of it.
Okay, um, the next item we have talked about before. Um, we have budgeted uh police uh. A additional police support um in our budget this year. Uh I had been, I had been with you earlier, looking to do it uh earlier than the budget. Uh had space for and we deferred, but we're now at the point where we're, we're into the area where we have. Have the, in the budget and the bu, and we are financially in a position to, budget-wise to um to support moving forward. And so to do that, I need, you know, I, we wanna, we wanna go into a memorandum of understanding with the sheriff's department. I, I don't believe we've got the M O U finalized yet, do we, Polly?
No, I never heard back from them. I'll follow up again, but he never responded to my request for.
Basically, uh looking at sixteen hours a week of, of additional police coverage. You may have seen uh the sheriffs uh. Um. In, in the area already, uh they've started uh, starting to pay some more attention to hideout. Uh our primary uh drivers for this are uh traffic control. Enforcement, especially around some of the parking issues, particularly with the construction guys. Um, having a, a visible presence in the town and um looking, having them work for us. Uh for improve, uh helping us understand whether we need to do things differently for security purposes. Are they seeing things that would um encourage uh. Someone who's intent on a housebreaking or something uh to give them a signal that this would be a good house to break into. Kind of type of thing. Um. We, we have been talking about this as a council for more than a year. Year, year and a half, two years now. Um, and Jerry, I know we're gonna talk about impact fees after, but this, you know, this first tranche is in our budget. And uh, you know, I think it's the right thing for us to do, particularly with the increased population in the town. Um, you know, as we're, as we're growing, I think we need to. Um, we really need to get some more presence here, and we've also, as you know, we've had speeding problems. We do have a new camera system that's uh in the roundabout, which is great, and it does, it does a super job for us. But we haven't been able to do any enforcement, so with these guys engaged, then we can start to. Uh chase down these, the uh, the wrong way drivers and so forth, and they can be um, they can be cited.
Now, the last we talked about this, my recollection is that we were talking about doing a trial period first. Is that what we're still talking about or is this?
We're talking about trial to get um, to get. To try and do it as an early, but at this point, I, I'm, I really want to just, I really would like to just do it. In sixteen hours a week, rotating hours, you know, we'll do some mornings, some evenings, some nights. But I, I'd like to get past the trial stage. I mean, if we're unhappy with it, we've got in our, in the M O U, we will, we have a uh. We, we have an exit clause, cuz if they're not doing what we need. But I mean, he has the staff to do this, and so um. You know, the problem with the trial is you can't staff if he doesn't think it's gonna go more than three months.
And Mayor, this, this sounds like a good idea, but what, what do, what do we only get? It's kinda like an average of two hours a day, so if you do the math, what, what? Uh you know, I mean, have they given us kind of a?
Ralph, we're, I mean, for them to come up, I mean, cuz they're, you know, we're gonna get it in four hour blocks. So they'll come up four times a week on varying days. Uh obviously, they respond to nine one one and the rest, but. You know, this, this is just to uh just be seen, be present. Uh, you know, work with Kent and Travis and the guys from the construction standpoint, as far as. That, the, the traffic control and the parking for the construction areas. Uh respond to our concerns where we picked up on the cameras or set up in the areas where we have speeding issues. Like we know they're coming blazing through shoreline in the early mornings. Um, so we'd like to get a, you know, patrol car sitting up there and a, you know, uh in the morning. Or, or coming down the other side of Longview from um, from Rossler. Um, so that they begin, the residents begin to see that. There's an opportunity for them to meet the uh, the police force from time to time on a personal basis. And maybe folks to slow down.
Yeah, so obviously, we don't want to advertise their rotation schedule.
No, no, it's gonna.
But I'm also wondering if, you know, uh, people aren't quite used to um having enforcement. So, you know, maybe there's a uh, a grace period that we can negotiate to.
Yeah, that's, that's great, Jerry. I actually talked to the sheriff about that, that we would, we, you know, we would do warnings till uh, till January, for example. And then start digging people. They're gonna record this stuff. We talked about this. The prior time, they're gonna keep records. I mean, if, if, if they're stopping the same person um on multiple occasions, then. They'll, they're gonna cite him. You know, you'll get, you know, a, a, a nice reminder the first time. Uh maybe a, a little less nice the second time, and then you're gonna get cited. If you're doing something horribly excessive, you'll get cited right away. If you're driving around the roundabout the wrong way. You're gonna get, you're gonna get cited. You're not gonna get a, a, a nice reminder that there's a one-way street here. If you go eighty on a twenty mile an hour road, um, um, will, so you know, we're gonna rely on their experience. Um, on, on how they approach traffic stops and when do they get serious and when do they? Um, when do they, you know, just remind folks, you know, they're, they're way more experienced. We should, you know, with their, with their help and uh, and with the meetings we have with them, we'll review their stops and talk about it. And, you know, hopefully, after a couple of months, we'll be on a place where we can agree with them that. Um, okay, it's, it's time to cite everybody, or if they're five over, it's one thing. If they're twenty-five over, it's something else, but we're gonna use their experience to help us, you know, create that framework.
And we'll definitely wanna publicize, you know, when the start date is.
Yeah, we definitely will, we'll definitely be putting a note out on the webpage, put it in the uh, the newsletter that Carol puts out for us. Um, reminding uh or, or, or letting everyone know that we've entered into agreement. And uh I won't necessarily cite the hours, but that um, that you can expect to see a sheriff's vehicle. From time to time and uh, and uh, you know, and, and encourage folks to uh, to avoid. Uh being cited by obeying the traffic rules, driving the right way, driving the right speeds and uh being safe.
And I, I think we talked about this last time as well, but to, to be clear, that the town does not draw any revenue. Off of citations, so you know, that's. Yeah, I've lived in Texas a long time and, and uh in Texas, you know, the, the town does get a, you know, sometimes. Towns are funded based upon citation volume, so we just wanna be clear that that's, that's not a revenue source for us.
No, not, no, but it is a good idea. I mean, we'll get our own police department and just stop everybody.
I have a question, and that is, um, we're up here in hideout in the little wedge that goes of, of Wasatch County. But basically, uh when I've gone into Heber, I see the sheriff's cars or I see them on forty. Um, does he, do Heber or does, does Heber City, does Midway, do they pay extra?
Midway does, Midway does, uh because they use the county. Heber City has Heber Police, so they have their own police department.
Okay, so in other words, when we get the presence of the sheriffs or the communities that get the sheriffs, they have to pay extra for them?
Well, you, you get, Carol, what they're, what the current Wasatch County budget allows, which is minimal. Uh minimal coverage, basically nine one one type response. Um versus, you know, a, a greater level of coverage. And so the communities that want a greater level of coverage contract with the county to pay for that service. So Midway actually pays for an entire officer, essentially a full-time officer. Um. Uh, and maybe one and a half, I can't recall, but um, I think it's, I think it's actually one and a half that they pay for from their, their own midway budget. Um, and we're, you know, we're not, we, we don't, this, I didn't think we needed to get to that level yet. We don't have quite the, the level of concentration of, of residents that Midway has. Um, so, but we do, you know, we have said on multiple occasions throughout multiple versions of the council that. We want, you know, some additional presence. So. That's the way we're gonna get it.
What is their budget? I mean, what, what is the sheriff's budget?
I'd have to look it up. It's on there, you know, it's in the public domain, Carol, but there, you know, Wasatch County is a big county. They have a lot of geography to patrol. Um, you know, they're, they have. I mean, we can continue to, as, as a taxpayer in Wasatch, you certainly can, we can all write to the county asking for additional police presence. Um. You know, as we talk to our county representatives, but. For, for hideout to gain some coverage, this is the only way, additional coverage.
Uh Mayor, I don't recall. What's our budget for this?
Yeah, it's um, it's, it's seventy thousand dollars for a year. Um. That includes uh, you know, sixteen hours a week. It includes their cars, it includes um. Their fuel, it includes the, the connections to the, to the uh D O T or U dot. Or V dot, whatever, U dot, not U dot, but the, the licensing bureau. So they can do plate checks, all that kind of stuff. So they can do plate checks, all that kind of stuff, uh, check for warrants, uh, when cars are stopped, uh, et cetera, et cetera. And so this, this year actually drops across two, two years, uh, two fiscal years. We do half in, uh, twenty twenty and half in twenty twenty-one. We don't have to renew, uh, if we don't want to, as long as we give them notice. Uh, but, um, and or we can, i- i- in the next area, we can, next item we can talk about is, is there another way to fund this versus from the general fund?
I think this is a good idea.
And do they monitor the cameras as well? I think you said that in the early part of the conversation.
Yeah, we, we, we will give them access to the, to the camera, camera system. Um, so they can, you know, pull that up and if they have a, as far as being able to, look for license plates and/or drivers to confirm, you know, those reports or look at, look for, um, because they're not going to, you know, they're not, they're not here every minute. So, you know, we have, we have, the, the camera system has actually got, uh, AI built in. You can, uh, you can, you can have it show you only the cars. You can have it show you the, the, uh, it'll actually also read some license plates for you. So it's pretty, pretty clever. So, but there, you know, if we want to, they're not going to review every, uh, car through the roundabout. Um, but if we have, uh, cars going through the roundabout the wrong way, for example, or not stopping or whatever, you know, we can have one of our admin folks or one of our public works folks pulling those, uh, you know, reviewing the sequences, especially if we have something reported and finding the, the, uh, the appropriate sequence that we can then share with them.
So the AI is not smart enough to only tag the wrong way drivers?
You know, Jerry, I don't know. Um, there's a, there's a webinar coming up that I'll have to do some, I can ask that question. I honestly don't know if it's, if it can ascertain directionally the moving. That, that's a great question. Well, I'll ask them.
I'd be surprised if it didn't. But the other thing that, you know.
Read license plates. It can probably tell left versus right.
Yeah. The, the other thing potentially that this gains us is faster nine one one response. Cause the likelihood of having an officer close by is far more likely, or at least is more likely than, uh, than if we weren't.
So, uh, so we, you know, Polly and I, the final language on the MOU, but again, we'd like the council's approval to enter into the MOU and move it forward.
So do you just need a, a, a motion to authorize you to enter into the MOU?
Exactly.
I'll still move.
I'll second that. Okay.
And to be clear, MOU is, is memorandum of understanding.
Correct.
And the amount of the money, as the mayor said, was already, um, allocated in your budget.
Okay.
One last question. When we, uh, in order to keep it going into next year, we have to increase the budget because it's at seventy thousand a year. That's a, turns out to be eighty-six fifteen hour, right? You know, works out that. So are we going to have to increase our budget next year?
No.
To cover this, to get our sixteen hours a week?
We, we'll have to, we'll, yeah, we only budgeted for half a year this year. We'd have to budget for a full year next year or decide we're going to cut it off at, at mid-year, at December of next year.
The challenge you're going to have is that they are going to be on a calendar year budget and you are on a fiscal year budget. So you'll never quite match up, but you'll be able to, we'll be able to contract to make it clear what the expectation is.
To Chris's point though, do we have any sort of a rate guarantee as we move from year to year? Does it auto renew? Do we have to actively renew it? And are there rate increases built into it?
There, there aren't, Jerry, um, there's no, this is not like each year goes up three percent or whatever. We can, uh, um, we can, we're setting this at a fixed rate for one year with the possibility of renewal.
So I believe there's a motion and a second on the table.
Right. I'm just answering Chris's question. So depending, Chris, you know, if we, um, if we decide that we like it and we wanted to move it to, um, more than, you know, fill out the entire fiscal year, then we would have to identify an additional roughly thirty-five thousand dollars in our budget to cover the entire twenty-one fiscal year.
Okay. Thanks. You answered my question.
Okay. So a motion to, uh, enter into the MOU. Ralph?
Yes.
Thank you. Carol?
Hesitant, yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that, everybody. Right. I think we're going to be pleased with it. Really do. Um, so I believe Jerry, you'd sent a note asking, um, if we could talk a little bit about moving on to the next subject of the, the role of impact fees and, and how they can be used. Um, and I asked Polly to do a little, um, tutorial, um, at a high level anyway. Um, to kind of give us some thoughts around, you know, it, I guess you were thinking, Jerry, you know, thinking about other forms of revenue to continue to move the town forward.
Yeah, I think there was a, a suggestion at some point in the past that we establish a, an impact fee for parks and police. And I, I think Polly's already, um, said that, you know, you can't do that or there's some, so I'll let her speak to that. But, you know, that was the suggestion that was made at some point in the past.
Yeah. So, and I checked in with Dan as well, just because to find out what had been discussed. But, um, and also Jan and I talked about, just because I think there's a huge concern by the council in terms of what is your source of revenue for the town? And so I suggested that she do make a presentation, um, next month concerning kind of giving you an overview of your possible, um, means of revenue. So that you can really see all the different options. Um, I couldn't pull it together, uh, for this month. But I can talk a little bit about impact fees in terms of, you know, impact fees aren't out of the question for parks and police and other public facilities. Uh, obviously you have your infrastructure is already taken care of with your, with, um, what you just passed.
No, we haven't. I'm sorry.
That was backward looking, not forward looking.
Right. But right now you've kind of, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend trying to pass something for forward looking fees having to do with infrastructure, because I think that will get in the way of your backward looking. Right? You have to pay back that one. But, you know, impact fees are, they're exactions. So they're very, they're quite regulated under the state code. And what they're for is, um, the proportion that the development uses. So for example, if you have a new development and that requires, uh, it's going to have X number of people living there and that requires more police protection, they would be, they could be responsible. If you do a study, you know, it's very involved, as you know. But, um, they would only be on the hook for the proportion of the cost that they are causing. Right? So you couldn't use impact fees to pay for all your police because you already have a community that's pre-existing that needs police services. So it's just the incremental amount, um, additional that you can create impact fees for. Um, but that isn't to say that you couldn't, you, by all means, could do impact fees for those type of things. Especially if there's more development coming online, um, to help create a park, let's say. So let's say you have a new development. They wouldn't be responsible for the entire park, but they could be responsible for a portion of it.
Let me give you a scenario here because, you know, as, uh, uh, we, we entered into an agreement with MIDA, which includes, you know, a development fund and that development fund can be used for the, um, construction or creation of parks and recreational facilities, but that money cannot be used to maintain it. So, you know, we have a source of, it, a future source, you know, it's not coming yet. But we have a source of revenue for creating some of those amenities. But in order to, you know, we don't want to build something we can't maintain.
Right. But that's true for impact fees too. So you would be using your general fund money for maintenance. The impact fees aren't meant to be for maintenance. You know, the classic example they use of an impact fee is a pipe, right? I mean, obviously we've already dealt with the infrastructure, but you have a new development. You need, you already have your water system within the town and this development causes X more feet of pipe to have to be created. Or, uh, you need to increase the size of the pipe because of the development. But they're not responsible just because they're the trigger that causes the bigger pipe. They don't have to pay for all of it. So, um, the point is, is that you can use impact fees. It's meant for like public facility type things. It's not something that's done overnight, as you know, you need to have something that you're actually creating. So you need to have kind of capital costs and capital fund for those facilities that you're paying into. Um, but the impact fees are meant, you know, they are meant to better the town and to create amenities for the town. But they're, they, they need, you need to have a study to show exactly what the impact will be of a development. So I think it's, you know, a tool in the toolbox. It's not going, it can't be used for general fund money. It can't be used for maintenance, but it is a tool to help get Hydeout to be a better place.
So if, sorry, aside, sorry, question. If we put aside the fact that we are, uh, we, we passed an impact fee to deal with, the fact that the developer put in the infrastructure that's in the town today. If five years from now, we need to upsize the sewer lift station because, because we've, a lot more houses have gone in. Or did, are we, is there, is there a way to do that through impact fee? Or do you do that because it's, it's, because it's pre-existing, the, the houses were already, the, the, uh, the, the total number of houses were already granted, that we're just, we just have to suck it up?
You know, without, I haven't had an opportunity to really get in the weeds on the reimbursement agreement and, um,
Pretend we don't have a reimbursement agreement. Just put that aside.
Okay. So just generally, okay, if you didn't have a reimbursement agreement, if you're just talking about infrastructure, you could create, let's say you need a new lift station, right? Yes, you could use impact fees for that facility, but the new development wouldn't pay for a hundred percent of it. They would just be paying for their proportion of it. That so, and you can collect, you don't have to have a project already being built. You can prospectively say, we're going to put in a park eventually in the town. And so you can earmark it for all the new development, how much impact, you'd have a study to say, this is how much impact the new developments would have, um, on the, you know, need for a park. And then they would pay a proportional amount.
All right. So we, we've got a lot to think about and learn, learn more about how, how it might, if we were to use that tool, how we could potentially use that tool.
Yeah. And I think it would be helpful, I, I'm hoping, and I'm going to work closely with Jan on, um, putting together a presentation next month that can kind of talk about what your different avenues are.
Okay.
Um, you know, you're very residential, so impact fees seem like a great kind of solution. But it is quite limited. It's not, it's not a revenue source per se. It's more of, uh, say, uh,
Yeah. So there's sort of one-time capital.
Exactly.
Things, but then, you know, as a result of those capital investments, you then need to have the revenue to maintain those investments going forward.
Exactly. And you do that through taxes or other general fund sources.
Okay.
Other questions?
Polly from the council?
Ralph, you're on mute.
Your mouth's moving, Ralph, but I can't.
It was a question I had before, I think it was a mute then. Hey Polly, what's, what's the timeframe on these impact fees to spend? Is it, is it a sta- is it a stated timeframe, which, at which point you have to use the fees that you've accumulated?
Yeah, there is a timeframe, but it's quite easy to punt it. So it's tied in with your capital, um, your ta- capital account and that type of thing. But, um, my recollection is that there is a timeline, that you actually have to use the funds, but you can, you can, it's easy to move it along and have them be out there for a while.
Okay. Thanks. Look forward to your presentation. Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay. Item four, update on Mustang LLC issues and preparation for quarterly meeting. So we were making good progress on the pond and then, um, things went silent. Um, part of that had to do with the fact that they're, uh, that they were, uh, looking for their first tranche of the impact fees. Uh, Jan, did we, did we get that done? Jan? Jan, are you there?
There. I'm unmuted. Yes. Um, the check was hand delivered.
Okay. So, um, as a result of that, thanks, Jan, um, I'm going to be requesting the, uh, the first meeting, uh, to raise our, our concern points with them. Mustang, sorry, Mustang, the, the pond being one. Um, the other one that I'm very interested in pursuing is their, uh, delinquent payments on a number of services, uh, that they haven't, uh, that they are responsible for, but haven't paid for. So the town has basically been subsidizing their, their work. And so I want to talk about that. And, uh, and I've talked with Polly about what happens if they still don't pay. Then we, you know, what, what legal actions do we take, uh, around getting, getting ourselves made whole for the things they owe us for? I don't have dates yet. I know, and I'll be looking for, because we're allowed to have a couple of members from the council looking for volunteers to participate in that first session. What other? I don't want to put like twenty-seven things on the table all at once. If we, I just assume focus on the top two or three.
Yeah, maintenance area would be.
Yeah, maintenance area would be one of the top items, sure. And as I recall, I think I already volunteered to.
Yeah.
To participate.
I would volunteer on that too.
Yeah.
And uh, to be clear, th- th- they have some fees that they're delinquent on, or they have fines that they haven't paid?
They have, no, they have, they haven't paid um, some pass-through engineering charges. Um, they they're not, they're delinquent on their water costs. Um, so there's some things that they, they have nothing to do with the fines, sure.
Okay, and are, have we started fining them for the pond yet?
We have, we have, we have not issued them the citation yet, but we have, they've been given the letter and told that they're going to be. That they are being charged X dollars a day uh, for the nuisance characteristics associated with that. That would be part of this whole discussion is get it fixed, you know, and pay your fine, get it fixed. Where, you know, we just keep building fines and going after you and get them. You know, with Polly's help, we'll get them put on, you know, we'll get them put on uh, on their county record. Which would make it difficult for them to uh, you know, sell property.
So, but will Polly be invited to this meeting? I would really like to request that.
Well, yeah, Polly and or Dan or both, yes.
Okay, or Dan or both, right? Um, because I I just have this suspicion that they might in be in breach of of contract in their master development agreement. If they're not making, if they're delinquent on payments.
I can't comment on that, Chris, maybe.
I'm just, you know.
Okay, we'll take a look at the MDA.
Yep.
And also, you know, an accounting of bills owed and get a clear list and, you know. Even before the meeting, we can check in with them to see what their position is on on this, or why they're not paying.
Yeah, that would be a great idea, give them a chance to come up with a explanation.
Hey Polly, can can we put a lien on their transfer fees?
Their transfer fees.
Yeah, so every time you buy or sell a ha- a home in Hideout, you pay a transfer fee of a one point two-five percent, I believe. I don't know if that's leanable, so to speak, uh, but that's.
Paying that to the uh, HOA, I believe, Ralph.
Well, there's two of them, Phil, uh, Mayor. So um, one goes to the HOA and one goes to Mustang, I believe. Um, I don't know how that's worded legally in terms of that transfer, but I think the bigger proportion goes to the. Um, it doesn't matter, I mean, uh, one's, one is um, I think a fixed amount of a thousand. And the other one is a one point two, a one point two-five percent transfer fee. Um, that happens regularly, whether you're buying a new place or or you're or you're selling a, selling a place and you're buying another one, so.
And the thousand dollars is the HOA side of it, so that's what the other money goes.
To Mustang, right? Which is the big nu- which is the big number, so.
Yeah, exactly, it goes to the golf course, subsidizes the golf course.
Is that part of theirs, that must be part of the CCRs or something?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
So the question is, is it leanable, you know?
Or is the property itself leanable? Can we put a lien on the pool, or the pond rather, on that, that?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, because I want to be careful here, but it it seems like Mustang really doesn't care if they're fined or feed. Uh, they they just, you know, they're they're at least slow in making those payments. So if a fine doesn't turn their head, what do we need to do to turn their head?
Right. Okay, well, let's first, you know, I'm just jumping into it, but I'll get up to speed and find out exactly what's outstanding. What process we've given them to pay it, and then what to do if they don't pay it.
And I'd like to ask that we we start exercising the fine on the pond. I I think we've been more than um, exercise the forbearance that is due them. Um, so I think we need to start uh. You know, start that clock.
Okay, so what I've got for our. Talking points are uh, the pond, the maintenance area, the nuisance charges, and the delinquent uh, payments.
That's a good start.
Okay. So we'll have a, we'll tee that up and look for a date um, to sit down and have that first conversation. Okay, item five. Update on the referendum, so um. And what that leads to is discussion and consideration of adopting a resolution for a special election uh, associated with the referendum. So um. So Polly uh, is gonna, she's done a lot of work on this, real lot of work on this, timetables and who has to do what and when and all that kind of stuff. So I'm gonna let her kind of give us a, an overview of that whole process, where we are in that step. And then uh, we have to decide uh, when uh, when we would want to have the election. I'm I'm suggesting we do that in June, we talked about that when we uh. Passed the, the uh. The ordinance to annex, so, but I'll step back and let Polly uh, kind of take us through the timeline here.
Yeah, so first, just to talk about where we are with the referendum. Um, the application was received within, was timely received. And then um. The, there was just the fiscal impact statement was just issued um, just a few days ago, the eleventh. Um, I made a determination that the law was refer- was able to be referred, able to be part of a referendum. Um, on Monday, and uh, I found that it was a land use law. So what that means, just so that everybody knows, it's based on the numbers that I heard that that. I haven't talked to the county clerk directly, but through the, our clerk. Um, it was reported there are a hundred and one uh, eligible voters in the town of Hideout. And because this is a land use law, it's uh, forty percent of the signatures need to be gathered. Of registered voters, um, which puts the number at, I think, a hundred and thirteen signatures. Um, so that's what's going to have to be um, gotten from citizens.
Polly, I'm I'm sorry, just to be clear, I thought you just said there was a hundred and one registered uter- user or voters. I I think that number's higher than that, right?
Hundred and eighty-one.
Hundred and eighty-one, okay.
I'm sorry, I might have just.
Yeah. I I saw, yeah, okay.
So the big number for signatures is a hundred and thirteen uh, that have to be collected. Um, what's happening next is um, so Alicia, the town clerk. Uh, put together what's called a proposition information pamphlet. That was distributed to um, the sponsors as well as anyone who submitted an argument for the proposition. Um, information pamphlet, which was on behalf of the town, that was the mayor. Um, that will be distributed within the next ten days. Um, we were waiting for tonight's meeting so that it could be considered when the special election would be. So that, uh, or if there would be a special election, when this election would take place. So that it could be put on the signature petition. Since that seems, that would be helpful to the public, we thought that that would be um, helpful so that people would know when the election was. Um, once the signature packets are given to the sponsors. Um, the sponsors have forty-five days to collect the signatures. And it's, as you probably all know, it's a very specific and uh, a bit mind-numbing. What the, what the requirements are and what's allowed, what's not allowed. Um, so just, it needs to be, those signatures need to be um, taken very carefully. And um, then submitted to the county clerk. And there are requirements, it's done electronically initially, so uh, if you have any questions about that process, you can reach out to me. Um, I also, you know, or talk to someone else who's gone through the the referendum process. Um, if the signatures are all uh, gotten and it's found to be sufficient. Then uh, an election's ho- held, so that's what we're determining here. Uh, as I put in the resolution, there are three possible dates for our land use referendum. It's either a special election, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month of June, I'm sorry, not the month, but. Of June, which would be June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. Or it could also be held August tenth, uh, which is primary election, or November second, which would be your municipal general election. So that's something for you all to determine. Um, Alicia did a little bit of research to just find out how much it costs for a special election. I think it's around three thousand dollars. I would think that that would fall under our indemnity agreement anyway. But um, in any case, that's kind of the cost of holding uh, an election, a standalone election. Um, and that's about it, it's a really kind of unbelievably statutory. It reminded me of when I took uh, tax law in law school. It's just very statutorily based, you gotta dot your i's, cross your t's. And there are a lot of little hoops to jump through and a lot of dates to keep track of. But um, staff has been great and sponsors have been great. And so we're just, so tonight, the decision is um, when to hold the election. Assuming that the votes are, the signatures are acquired.
Polly, this isn't um, pertaining to the resolution so much as it is to the math here. If we have a hundred and eighty-one, forty percent is seventy-three.
It's two, it's two hundred and eighty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two hundred and eighty-one, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, the actual number that we got from Cal Griffith today was two ninety-six. So just, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're got the right math here and the right numbers. And 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 Polly, you you know, great job, thank you for all the efforts that you've done so far. I just want to make sure that we as sponsors, and there's a couple here, um, and I want to represent that group, but the numbers have to be exact. Um, because when we get down to the final analysis, um, you know, there's going to be someone. Um, and I think it's Cal who actually uh, you know, looks at the signatures, verifies the signatures and confirms those. So um, you know, who who determines this final number? Do you know, Polly?
And who certifies the, that we met the, that the, the sponsors met the total?
It's the county clerk, so if he told you that it was a hundred and ninety.
No, two ninety.
Two ninety, two ninety-six.
Yes, that was his number today, um, and he even said it fluctuates because, yeah.
It can't, because it's it's the number registered voters at the last election.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need that number, and I don't know if it's two eighty-one or two ninety-six, but he says the registered voters. Uh, and I don't know if that was on the last.
Registered voter number changes all the time, Ralph, I agree, but this is a, it's supposed to be at a specific date.
Yeah, I don't have, as I said, it's kind of all buried within the statute. I will look that up and talk to him to make sure that you have good numbers. I thought that that had been established already, but thank you for letting me know that there's an issue. And we will make sure that it's communicated to you how many signatures are required.
And is it registered voters on a given date? Or is it the number of people who voted in a, a past election?
It's the number of active voters. Um, and let me see if I have the actual language here, as I said.
That's okay, I'll I'll let you bird dog that out, I just wanted to make sure we were talking about registered actual voters.
So the number that you have to do is a fixed number, that number does not change. The mayor is absolutely right, it's, and I have to look exactly to see what that number is. It's active voters, and I can't recall um, when, I think it's like January first of last year or something like that. But I will find out exactly what that is. For the signatures, the people just have to be registered voters in the town. So if there's someone who just moved here and. You know, didn't vote last month, I don't know why they wouldn't, but, right? If they didn't vote, they can still register and you have to just make sure that their registration has been submitted to the county clerk. Before they, before you submit their signature in your package.
Yeah, that's what I understand, and 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 that was a question, you just said, just make sure they're in. Um, you know, any forms that we get from active people who may have moved into town can sign. Um, register as a voter, they become an eligible um, name or in in our list. Even though they didn't vote, or they weren't in in the town, when the numbers three years ago um, were determined. So, you know, we can, we can sign up new people. That's what, Polly, is that correct?
Absolutely, so you should be, you know, get the voter registration forms in case there are people that aren't registered to vote. Or if, you know, you, there's a kid who's turning eighteen, you know. And that, that week, they can sign, that person can sign it as long as he or she gets registered prior to the submittal of the signatures. There's also, you know, so just, yes.
Yeah, we got a hundred forms, so um, we we can sign up a hundred more people to vote. That makes, uh, you know, that makes it a little bit easier.
Um, okay, thanks. So we'll get you the exact numbers and make sure everybody knows them. Based on, from when we passed, when we got the request. Uh, the, you know, the signatures requesting the referendum sets a date of when the. When the uh, registered voter number gets created, as as Polly was mentioning. Um, and then we we get that, and you know, you get the number of signatures we're looking for. The thing that, the other thing we want to work on is uh, can we agree on doing this as a special election in June? I personally would like to see that. Um, it would be, you know, the sooner we understand what's going on and the direction of the of the community. Then the sooner we can either press ahead or um, stop spending time on it, depending on how the vote comes up.
My big question on that, Mayor, is um, one, what is the effect of a special election? Will we get more voters or less voters? I'm gonna say we, you know, we will know that, but what is, what is the general trend on that? And if it's less, um, I'm against um, doing it in June, and I would do it on a normal date. So if if it's much more likely that we would get more people, so there's only thirty, there's about forty days or fifty days between. The uh, June uh, nut date and the August date, which is a standard date. So given fifty days, um, you know, given the whole timeframe. Uh, you know, I'd say go with the standard date because that's when people vote. Um, if there is evidence to support uh, that special elections draw at least as many or more. Then I would say, fine, but I don't know that per se, so does anybody, does anyone here know that?
Well, I don't, I don't know that, Ralph, but if this is, this is a burning issue. I, you know, I think we owe it to, to a community to get out there. And if if the energy is anywhere near what the energy has been and the feedback so far. Then I I don't see how being able to vote uh, in June, for this June election is an imposition. Polly, this is a mail, this is a mailing type uh, issue, right? It's not an in-person showing up at the the vote. Showing up at the, the voting center to vote, correct? I think these can be done with a, with a mail-in ballot.
I think so. I would defer to Alicia, who's our election person to, I don't know. It, the, the statute doesn't specify whether it's mail or not. I think that that's something that the council determines. If I, if I'm correct, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. And then also, in the time of COVID, it might be different.
Alicia, can these be mailed in?
Yeah, it can definitely be mailed in. In fact, I would suggest it being mailed in. You tend to get a ti- a higher turnout when it is a mail-in ballot. Um, as far as, if I can go back to the numbers. The day that we received the rest, the referendum is when I emailed, uh, Cal to get the number of registered voters. And that day, um, that number was two hundred and eighty-one. So yes, we had the presidential election, more people registered to vote. On the, you know, during the election and everything like that, same day registration, provisional ballots, things like that. So yes, the numbers would be higher, obviously, now, um, going back to Ralph's, um, question and, and Jerry's. Um, as far as the, uh, in-person and mail-in, you can absolutely do a mail-in. I would defer to the council to make that decision, um, but I would suggest that it seems to be cheaper. Doing it that way, we would probably, I would, I would imagine that we would still want to have an in-person, um. Machine here, um, that we could possibly rent from the county, um, or maybe not even a machine, I'm sorry.
Just paper ballots.
Yeah, I can, it's sorry, I'm, I'm going back to the optical scan stuff, but, um. But as long as somebody's here to receive a ballot and issue those ballots at town hall. I don't see any reason why we can't do the majority by mail, so.
And Ralph, I would agree with you. If it was in-person voting, there's, you know, people aren't as likely to get out for a special election as they would for a. Primary or, um, a federal election, but I agree as mail-in, it's just as easy in June as it is in August.
Yeah, I want to add something to, yeah, I agree, agree with you, and I, I'm totally a hundred percent behind mail-in voting, so. But, um, I want to point out that ne- next year, the municipal election is going to have at least. Three, uh, races happening, at least two council members and the mayor, and it's very possible. Possible that there could be a, um, August primary election if we have a lot of people trying to vie for. You know, any, either the council seats or the mayor, and I'd really like to separate out the referendum. Um, and focus on that, and, and it, my. My, uh, opinion is I, I really like to get it done sooner rather than later. Um, so I, I'm definitely in favor of the June twenty-second date for that. I just, I think it gives us enough time. Um, to, you know, prepare, um, to, i- i- you know. For the messages to get out for and against amongst the community, it's still very fresh in people's minds, and then. They can focus on that in June, and then if there isn't a, a primary election, uh, in, on the tenth, that we're not like mixing, mixing those together.
I agree. I like the June date. For, for all the reasons Chris just enumerated.
Carol, Bob, any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm good with June.
And, and I'm good with June also, for all the reasons Chris stated.
Well, and, and by the way, I'm not arguing for the, for the August date, so, um, I'm just bringing up a point as to whether we will get a good turnout. Um, and if we think we're going to get a good turnout, for all those reasons, I'm for, because it's all about the turnout and. Timing, you know, coming, you know, sep- and if it's a separate election and we can do it by, continue to do mostly by. Uh, you know, paper ballot, then, you know, that's good with me as well.
If we're gonna get a hundred and thirteen signatures, we, if there, if there are a hundred and thirteen signatures or more are going to be. Turned in as people who are supporting this mechanism, then I'm. I'd like to think that those people who sign their names are going to do, go through the effort of filling out the ballot and mailing it in.
You make, you, everybody makes a good argument here. My only, my only premise was, would we get more? And I have no idea how special elections go, but there's obviously enough, um, there's enough information flow going around the community that. Uh, you know.
And there'll be a lot more.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah.
Ralph, Ralph, if, if our last decision, whether annex or not, is any indication, there are a lot of special interest groups out there, or let's say, you know. Inter- interested parties that are going to be arguing one way or another very loudly. So I'm, I'm, I'm guessing, uh, that there, there's going to be a lot of, uh, a lot of interest. I would expect the turnout to, in Hideout to be high.
Okay. So therefore, we'd be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution establishing a special election on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. To consider a possible referendum challenging the adoption of Oregon's twenty twenty dash ten.
So moved.
Thank you, Bob.
Second.
Thank you, Ralph. Chris?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Ralph? Yes, thank you. All right. That's very helpful. And gives everybody a firm date to work with and gives us the ability to get our information package out with the date on it, so that's great. So Polly, you've got your, what you need here.
Yep.
To do that next stage, thank you. At this point, we come to the end of our, uh, public agenda. We do have a need to discuss, uh, pending or reasonably, reasonably imminent litigation, personnel matters and or sale. Uh, or acquisition of real property as, as needed, um, and so. I would be looking to, a motion to close the public session and move to executive for the, uh, for the purposes so described.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Carol's second, thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 As per normal, I'm going to.
Mayor, do you need to, uh, ask for nays? I think everyone said aye, but just formally.
I heard all, but, um. Nay is fine. Anybody object? Didn't think so. Uh, per normal, what I'm going to do is actually end the meeting. Uh, knock us all off and, um, rejoin. Uh, after the mandatory five-minute bio break, um, that we all need. So it is eight forty, we'll be back on at eight forty-five. Okay? Thank you all, and, uh, we'll see the council and Polly and Rob, uh, Rob Mansfield back on at eight forty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you.